Now, we will go on to the public hearing. And it's scheduled for nine, so we are well in time to go ahead and get started with that. Request from Silvado Green Works LLC for the establishment of a special use district to develop a solar power electricity generating facility. And it goes forward with the legal description and ends in lands of Rye. So we will begin with that. We do have counsel on the phone. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for being here, Dennis. We're lucky to have you, so we appreciate you being here. So what we'll do is we'll go ahead and begin with the public hearing. We will begin with the presentation by Silvado Green Works. And after that, I will make sure that enough time is given to anyone in opposition of anything that has been presented. And I will give enough time for each side to speak. Each person will be given no more than five minutes to go ahead and discuss any opposition. The presentation itself, you can go ahead and you're free to provide us with the presentation at your length, and then comment afterwards. We'll be limited to five minutes, okay? So who will be presenting that this morning?
Chairwoman.
Yes, sir.
If there are anyone in the audience that are entitled to present, they have an actual chance of sharing some information.
Absolutely. Thank you. We will make sure.
All right.
Michelle, did you want to swear, everyone?
Yeah. To state your name, please, for the record.
My name is Maru Pivara.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Chris Wedeman. Yes.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you very much for this opportunity. I wanted to introduce the Silvado project, the Silvado Works, which is the project name for the Tlants County area. This is Chris Wedeman, the land manager that identified the property, and he did the presentation as well to the Planning and Zoning Commission as well. The State Economic Development Department, and I would like to ask for questions as well. And with that, we'll turn it over.
Thank you so much.
You want me to turn that over?
Thank you, Myra, for the introduction. I have hard copies of the presentation as well.
Okay.
Looks like you guys may have something similar. Okay, yeah, that's from Planning and Zoning, it's very similar.
If there's anyone in the audience that would like to look at those, you can pass them to those in the audience.
Actually, I have a laptop I can use the projector, or we can just do it verbally, your choice. I have enough copies just to distribute probably.
Let me come around.
If we have enough copies, we can go ahead and go forward. If we don't, then we can pause and set up your projector. Is there anyone in the audience that would like a copy? Go ahead and raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Do you have seven copies?
Yes, we do have seven.
Perfect, so we have just enough.
I have a supplement to hand out to the Commissioners as well.
Thank you very much. Go ahead and start, as soon as you're ready.
Yeah, thank you. I want to thank the Commission for giving Silvado the opportunity to speak today.
Yes, sir.
As Myra mentioned, Chris Wedeman and I manage to deliver this land in many efforts. So, let's see here. Just kind of a brief overview on Silvado Power. We are a utility scale solar photovoltaic developer. We're located in San Francisco, and we develop large scale solar projects throughout the southwest United States. We have an extensive portfolio in California, as well as Arizona and New Mexico. Excuse my voice, by the way, I think the dry air of New Mexico is catching up to me. So Silvado is partnered with Mark Purver. Mark Purver is a Portuguese NPC. Essentially, what they do, they have a sort of a traditional NPC business in Portugal, you know, so the solar component, it was over 150 megawatts a year, solar PV installations. So they've been a great partner for us. They've been very hands-off partners, more of a kind of a funding relationship, and we've been able to leverage each other's respective experience. So it's been a very positive relationship. We have 100 megawatts that we won in SAE's renewable standard contract, contract solicitation point 10. It was the largest chunk of that solicitation won by any single developer. It was kind of a big indication of Silvado's credibility and a good way to kind of come onto the scene. The company was formed in 2010 by a group of industry veterans. John Chaney, who formed Involvent Ventures, which was later sold to Orlando, and Son Edison. So, and then several executive members from the current as well. So just a great team, and we've been having great success in California, and we're excited to bring back New Mexico as well. The second page of the presentation has some images of, it's more just kind of a description of various projects Silvado management has been involved in. We have the SAE 100 megawatts allotment, 50 megawatts in late-stage development. John Chaney was involved in the Nels project, one of the first sort of utility scale projects in North America, as well as several large Macy's rooftop installations, Denver Airport's 2-megawatt project, and Bulldog Farms, which was, I believe, the first utility scale project in California. So really, a good kind of cross-section of large scale projects in the US. The next slide kind of outlines our site selection process. I mean, really, it's sort of, I guess it's been kind of an iterative process for Silvado. You know, we've learned from the mistakes of other developers. Some people like to come in and just kind of put a project wherever there is a substation, transmission line, and kind of disregard biological issues, cultural issues. We find that identifying those before even going into trouble negotiating loan contracts is a great part of the process. So, you know, we do preliminary studies on biological issues, cultural issues. You know, obviously, we need to be next to transmission infrastructure. That's one of the reasons that we came here to Stancia, to the counties, because we identified a substation with suitable capacity. So, but beyond that, it's just sort of a matter of identifying the type of laws and avoiding them, which we think we've done on this site. The next slide is an overview of the project itself. There's actually a map on the following slide, but we'll give you better indication for example. It's 160 acres of 3D sort of dirt land. It is currently, has a pivot on it, although I don't believe it's been far in the past year, but it has been extensively farmed for a long period of time. The facility itself will be a 50-megawatt facility. It will interconnect with the Stancia substation, which is a quarter of a mile from the site. We are anticipating approximately 160 jobs at peak construction. Silvado estimates roughly 85% of those jobs will come from the local workforce. As stated, we haven't identified any environmental impacts, as I said. The next slide is kind of an overview of Silvado's technology and how we implement it. We've left the, I guess, the application of open for either fixed tilt or tracking technology. So either way, the panels would not exceed 14 feet in height. They'd probably come in closer to 7 to 10 feet, so pretty low visual profile. It's a pole-mounted system, meaning very little sight effect, very little radiation required, very little water needed. Once the site is operational, the only water required would be for on-end for its panel painting, essentially, which will be one to two times a year. No noise generation. It's a fixed tilt system, and the working force tracking would be getting silent. So, you know, really, just a very, a very quiet neighborhood, really, I would say. And as I mentioned, the construction jobs were estimating approximately 85% would be pretty locally. We have had some preliminary discussions with local colleges and community colleges to identify education programs, training programs, if they train out the local workforce to participate in the construction. That's something that we learned actively working as well. The next slide, kind of just a general overview, this is more just sort of to show the rendering of the project, just to kind of reiterate some of the previous points. The next slide shows a plot of the project. You can see Stancia to the southeast. The yellow triangle indicates the substation, it's very close to the project site, obviously. It's a intersection of County Road 8046 and County Road 8051. The following slide is an overview of the project layout. So typically, it'll be 2-megawatt blocks, 1.5 to 2-megawatt blocks of the radius, fixed tilt tracking. The schematic details on the right side indicate fixed tilt configuration. This is basically the layout. It's, you know, a field of solar panels, and there'll be a small substation on both west corner, which will transform the electricity generated by the panels to the 115-kV voltage deployment system. As far as permitting processes, general, obviously, project requires a special use district, state building permits, and of course, will be in compliance with all biological or cultural studies, including requirements at the federal level. We have been, we are committed to being an active member of the local community. We recognize that this project has been here for 25, 30 years, depending on the contract that's signed up for, and that's a long time to be a neighbor. So I think a lot of developers have the attitude that they can kind of freeze in town and freeze back out again, and it's Silvado's approach that we want to establish lasting relationships locally and make sure that we, that we are a neighbor. We've had extensive talks with the Stancia Valley Economic Development Agency. It's been very proactive, obviously, Myra introduced the project. We do plan to work with AVIDA and state agencies to identify the local labor force, and we think that would be a great way to kind of, you know, hone in on where there might be opportunities for local development and really implement that. So in terms of sort of integrating both the local community, that's a great, a great start, and the conversation's been very positive so far. I will just address the supplement that I handed out to the Commissioners as well briefly. So according to the process, and maybe all of Myra will speak to this, we'll have a wonderful process of economic impacts analysis for the project. So I understand that there's been some delay at the state level of processing those analyses. This is sort of a similar impact analysis that was developed by Enron to assess impacts of solar and wind projects. So I offer this as kind of a, I guess, a ballpark economic impact analysis of the project. I think, you know, I'm not sure how this will compare to the final impact analysis that you'll receive for the project, but it's intended to give kind of a rough idea of what some local impacts will be. So hopefully, this is helpful, just kind of a kind of reference while waiting for the final impact analysis.
Okay. Would you like to go through that, or?
I mean, I suppose we can go through some of the, some of the more important numbers.
Before you do that, Kathy, did you have an opportunity to look at over already?
No, this is Madam Chairman, this is the first time I'm seeing it.
Okay.
And I can explain the delay in this.
Okay, yeah, if you'll come forward, that would be great.
Sure.
Do you swear your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're going to give today is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Madam Chairman, and understood the Commission, I work for the Economic Development Department, and we have, for many, many years, provided a service to our smaller communities, and that services that we have contracted with a consultant out of Texas. And this consultant provides impact analysis and cost benefit analysis for our smaller communities. Communities like Yalbeca, they have money and they go contract with the University of New Mexico and testing analysis. We, as an agency, provide that service for our smaller, smaller communities. And the information will be similar to what you're seeing, but it'll be more in-depth, it tends to be 15 pages long. The delay is that all contracts that state agencies have engaged in are being reviewed by the Department of Finance and Administration. This is something that this administration is doing, they're reviewing contracts, which is absolutely fun. So we are anticipating that this contract will be approved within the next week. We will enter into an agreement with this consultant, and this project is a priority project, it's first in line.
Okay, great.
So that's an explanation of the delay. As soon as we get that contract, we will get this one done and get that information to you.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. We appreciate that. Well, why don't we wait then, and then what we'll do is when we get that report, we can kind of look at both of the numbers and compare them before we do our final approvals or disapprovals, depending on everything that we gather from the information today. So we will make that a point of record, and we can refer to that when we get the state's report as well. Is that okay with those at the table?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, go ahead and continue. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that pretty much concludes the presentation. I will mention as well, you know, the AVIDA's identifying state and local incentive programs dependent on the project. It's kind of an ongoing process, but it's something we're certainly open to.
Okay.
But I think we'll conclude the presentation.
All right, well, thank you, Chris. We appreciate your presentation and your interest in our county. We're now at the table for questions. Are there any questions from the Commission?
During construction, I'm not sure what kind of load you're going to be carrying in on the county roads, but I can expect probably some deterioration of the roads, and different things coming in. And are you guys planning on maintaining those roads during construction and keeping them up to par?
We do.
Okay.
We do. Yeah, certainly, I mean, the roads will have to be improved to meet the, to handle the additional load.
That'd be good.
So, yeah, absolutely.
Great.
Chris, I did see that, that was also a question that was asked of you during the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. And also, your same response was noted in the record that you would be willing to work on the roads and make sure that they did meet our county specifications. Have you identified who you would meet with in our road department or anything like that? Because we would want to absolutely make sure that that's documented and that those meetings would be set up.
Absolutely. We have not identified that person yet. I believe that'll be part of the traffic impact study. It'll be conducted as part of, part of the final building approval, so I can certainly relay the information from that video as scheduled.
Okay. Great. Commissioner, do you have any questions? So as I was looking over pretty much all of the information that was submitted to us, a lot of great work, of course, was always done by our Planning and Zoning Commission, because they ask all the hard questions before it gets here, and certainly, AVIDA and Kathy with the state do a lot, before it gets to us. So this is basically a waterless project. There's not a lot of water involved in this at all, basically, just I saw it mentioned, the dust control when you're actually doing the construction of the project. And really, you know, not a lot of cleaning has to be done, really, just to keep the dust off the panels. And so, do you want to explain anything as far as water? Because that is one of our most precious resources in our county. So for the record, for the people that are in the audience that may not know or have had the opportunity to read the documents like we have, can you briefly discuss that, please?
Yeah, absolutely. So the water used in the project, as you mentioned, is minimal compared to an agricultural application. You're a good pastor, you know, I would estimate maybe 100 acres per year would be used for, you know, for an ag application. This project is estimated to use roughly 2.4 acres per year for cleaning, and cleaning only. There's no operational need for water, so it's really just a maintenance use. So really, quite long in comparison to other uses locally, and the water will come from the site, so it'll be self-contained.
Okay. And you did mention in your report that the maintenance of the panels would be done by hiring local people to do that cleaning. Did you identify maybe six people for that, or could you discuss that briefly?
Yeah, we have not identified the local contractors that we would use. It's, well, it's really never too early to have that conversation. I think what we discussed at the PNC meeting was essentially, the program is required to train employees up for them as sort of an application, take, you know, six months, maybe a year at most. So actually, kind of an important point to bring up is currently, the expected online date for the project is 2013, December 2013. So there is a window between now and the actual start of construction, within which we expect to be able to work with local schools and training programs to make sure that there are employees with skills needed to do those jobs.
Also, in the packet that was provided, it was identified, where is the, the energy is not going to be stored, it's going to go immediately into the grid. Could you kind of explain that process and who you have identified to use of that energy? Kind of what is the purpose of the project? What is the bigger picture? Who will it benefit? And what will the local benefit be to our county?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. So kind of the big picture, I guess, to step back, the reason that Silvado identified New Mexico for its development efforts, it was a response to a solicitation program from PNM, utility here in the area. They, New Mexico has a renewable proposal standard. Utilities are required to procure a certain amount of energy from local resources to meet that goal. And so PNM opened up a program to receive solicitations from developers for projects. So that spurred our interest in the area. Power is being marketed to PNM. It'll be ultimately purchased by PNM, it'll stay in the state, it's not being marketed out of state. And it would, the immediate local benefits, it would serve the local Stancia towards heavy load. And there is no storage, as you pointed out, it's basically produced and goes right into the grid. So pretty fluid technology in terms of transferring electrons to the grid.
Right, we did see in the packet provided that you do have a contract with the landowner in place. What is the contract of PNM? Is there a timeframe on that? Have they made a commitment to you, and what's your commitment to them?
They have not yet made a commitment to us. It's an ongoing process. I'm not allowed to get too far into details on that, it's protected by confidentiality, but I can say that we're actively marketing the project to them, and we are optimistic that we'll be able to come to an agreement with them. So it's, it is an ongoing process. The agreement with the landowner is an option, so we haven't purchased the company, so it's, the option sort of matches the development timeline. I guess we get all the different pieces lined up, and then execute the option.
Okay.
So it's sort of part of the process.
So the company itself was actually formed in 2010? And what, how many other projects in that timeframe would you, do you have them up and running, or are most of your projects in development?
Well, so the short answer is, most of them are in development. The long answer is, the members of Silvado's executive team have been in the industry for a decade, so they collectively have numerous projects underway, and they've developed them through their full lifecycle. Silvado was formed to respond to certain new opportunity in the industry. So Silvado's, these projects are not, the development cycle for these projects is often three years, four years. So considering the amount of times since Silvado's paid out the money, I would say our projects are quite far along. So, and there are a number of projects, some of which are highlighted in the information, that have been built by Silvado.
And I guess one of my final questions is, you did mention being a good neighbor and commitment to community. What kind of projects have you thought of, or what way would you give back to the community other than, of course, the financial impact that would be given in jobs and so forth? And certainly, we like to be a leader in green energy. We have a wind farm in Torrance County, and so we see that finally, New Mexico is being noticed for our wind and sun. But what other, what kind of commitment have you thought of as far as, is it partnering with schools? Is it, have you put any thought into that?
Local job creation is our goal, and we know how to fortify it to the local community here. You actually hit on the head, I think, of our educational opportunities for local students who potentially tour the facility, have some sort of an interactive opportunity, maybe even come into the schools and present on renewable energy. These are opportunities that we've explored in other areas of California, and we're certainly looking to here. We, we view education as a very important component of sort of bringing the industry into new markets. So certainly, certainly something that we've done elsewhere, and we'd be very interested in doing it. We haven't had that conversation yet, but we'll certainly be open to it.
Okay, thank you. Dennis, I did have some questions for Kathy and for Myra, but just so that we stay true to the process, and we don't always have public hearings at every meeting, what would be the formal next step to go through so that I make sure we're doing everything correctly?
I would ask the audience if anyone has any cross-examinations over this term, and then if Myra come along for questions on the table, any cross-examination, and then Kathy, I'm assuming that one, but personally, I'll make sure for sitting down and chat.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. Are there any members of the audience that have any questions of Mr. Wederman as far as the presentation, as you heard it this morning? Pat?
I have a couple of questions.
You'll need to come up so that she can get you on the record, please. Thank you, Pat.
Cat Lincoln, did you name that the record?
Yes, I'm Cat Lincoln.
Do you swear that the testimony you're giving today is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. So I have a couple of questions. I'm looking at the site plan.
I just wanted to make sure the papers that those members are aware to cross-examine on the basis of their presentation.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, Dennis. Okay, go ahead, Pat. You were just stating that those that want to cross-examine don't need to be scored.
Oh, good, okay. So, access.
But if you could kind of speak into the mic, because I'm having a little bit of problem here, it's, thank you.
So I'm looking at the site plan, and I see that the access roads, both perimeter and interior, are 26 feet wide. I'm wondering what the setback is from the actual property line to the solar field, because it doesn't look like it's real water.
Yeah, so, that's a good question. We typically specify a 20-foot setback from the property line for the fence, and then the access road would be 26 to 30 feet, interior to that, and so it would be approximately 45, 50 feet.
And then my, my other question is, you note that there's 160 anticipated jobs during construction? So after the build-out is complete, and I, I think I heard you say there'd be about six for the washing, cleaning process, but just for operations and routine maintenance, what level of staffing do you require?
It's another great question that I should mention earlier. So the project is fairly low maintenance, and that's sort of the deal for local installations in general. We're estimating 60 permanent jobs for operations and maintenance, and that includes bird maintenance, animal maintenance, security, site security, and washing. So as an ongoing sort of maintenance staff.
And then my final question, just because I'm kind of familiar with this area and Stancia, this is in the floodplain?
It is not.
No, it's not. Okay.
One more question, is it where?
In the floodplain.
Okay.
Yes, Commissioner Freiberger has a question, Chris.
I'm talking about dust control, and when I was reading your plan, the two-point four. Talking about dust control, when I was reading the plan, the two-point-four feet of water for the side. After the construction, is there any plan or anything, which I didn't find here, for ground cover? I mean, the wind does blow here every once in a while. But you know, with the bare ground, that could cause for the residents that may be around it. Is there any plan to put some type of ground cover on it for lower maintenance?
Absolutely, absolutely. So there are two different approaches that are sort of utilized in the industry right now. And again, this is an advantage of the sort of pole-mounted system, where really on the foundation, it's a pole, you know, planted around, is it allows native vegetation to come back, native grasses, native cover. And we actually encourage that because dust creation on the project site will hinder production of the project. I've seen projects in California that literally within five weeks are just covered in a cover dust. And you lose production, you lose money, and you hurt your investors. So talk to Lily. With the bare ground, we encourage ground cover from that. And in some cases, depending on how quickly that happens, we will actually go out and cede the property with native grasses and vegetation to encourage that growth to come back. Because exactly, it's a concern for neighbors, it's a concern for the project.
To me, it's a win-win for all. Your maintenance will be lowered due to the dust accumulating on the panels themselves. And that seems to be actually one of your highest maintenance costs it would do is to make sure that they are efficient. Yeah, that's all, Matt, I think.
Okay, thank you. Are there anyone else in the, Steve, you had a question?
My name is Steve Getchall, planning and zoning coordinator. We had brought this up with Pat's question, whether this is in the floodplain or not. It's not within the special flood hazard zone. But this watershed directly affects the special flood hazard zone on the north side of the estancia and courthouse system. The impervious surfaces here, I brought this up at the planning and zoning meeting. I wanted to see something on the gradient and drainage about stormwater retention because of the change to the hydraulic conditions of the stormwater route. And I was just wondering, when can we expect to see those gradient and drainage drawings?
Thank you for bringing up this great question. My understanding is that'll be a part of the final approval from the state that that range and gradient plan will be required on the dust control study and all of those studies. So we'll be initiating that process immediately upon approval here for the admission. So I would estimate, you know, the next few months we'll be conducting that. Have either had it, but we don't have it now. We're, I know you don't have it.
Yeah. But I just want to make sure that we get concrete proposals for the county.
Absolutely, that's in the, in the file, yeah.
Thank you, Steve. That's certainly a good point. And I could see that in the packet as well. And if an approval were to come forth from this commission, I'm certainly sure that we could make that contingent upon those documents being provided to the county.
Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome. Is there any other questions from the audience? Chris, I do have some questions for AVITA and for our state economic development representative. So if you can just take your seat and then if we have further questions, we'll call you back up. Thank you so much. Myra? You guys can come up together.
Okay.
So you guys want to hand in hands. Well, I'd like to thank you for the work that you do for our county. My question is, I know certainly the vetting process is something that's always important to me and that's something that you usually handle for us. So could you kind of tell us the background that you've done, the checking that you've done on this company? And kind of what your position is as far as them being able to deliver what they've presented to us?
Absolutely. In the renewable, I have to preface this by kind of making a broad statement. In renewable energy, in this particular case, in economic development, it happens backwards. And the reason for that is because of PPA's purchase power agreements and transmission agreements. The state of New Mexico has a certain RFP, a renewable portfolio standard. In this case of Silverado, they responded to an RFP that PNM put out. PNM has to meet their certain obligations for solar. There's wind, solar, and biomass. When they put the RFP out, what happens is our office, the AVITA office, was infiltrated with all of these solar developers looking for property. And they always look for property that is around connection points, such as this particular one, and the transmission lines in the solar. Wind is a little bit more difficult because they have to actually be where the wind is. We have sun everywhere. When they did this, PNM received so many bids that in my, this team of PNM's economic developer, they had to postpone the decision. So once a decision's made and they get further along their process, then the developers force them to do their due diligence locally. Because they cannot get a final PPA or transmission agreement unless those entities fill. Now, it could be an entity with PNM that's sort of purchased the power. It could be California State Edison to get a, you know, whoever's buying the power. They want to know that the county and the local community, everything's been done there locally first. Because that, there's costs associated, there's environmental impacts. So they, these guys don't necessarily want to go through that process and spend so much money if, if they're not going to get the local due diligence first. So I want to explain why, because you guys are so right in asking, where's the PPA? Where's the TA? Where's the environmental impact? Where's the flood study? None of the state or federal agencies or the purchase power agreement person or transmission agreement person that's going to lease that, they want to make sure this is a project locally that is supported. So having said that, what we do is about the only thing we can do is go back and through the state, we can, there's several options. In this particular case, they're a new company, but they are, they're, the joint venture is through Martifer, who is a reputable solar company in the industry. You can say Martifer, everybody else, they are. They have a lot of projects. They are a California-based company and they have brought in joint ventures. So the best we can do is go and make sure that the mother company, the money, is there and that it's not a company that's just coming in and speculating, tying up land in the case that someday somebody wants to buy that contract out. And in the meantime, the landowner got no benefit. He just got tied up for 10 or 15 years. So our job, what we try to do is make sure it's a legitimate developer and that they really are going to do something with this land and build this project before we even bring them to you. In this particular case, what we did is we went back, we checked, we made sure the company, the sister company, where the money is, doesn't have any tax problems. You know, the things that we can do without, it costs us a lot of money to do. Then we get the state involved, the state does the due diligence they can do. In the process of doing the impact analysis, obviously, if there's local or state taxes that are due or if the land taxes weren't paid or if the companies filed bankruptcy, you know, those kinds of things will come out in a DMV report that, that would happen through the impact analysis. But the biggest thing that I do is I go on the PNM grid, because all of our transmission is either through Tri-State or PNM. If the project, if the developer does not have an application in on the grid, if they don't have an application in, they're probably not serious because that's the first step. You've got to get somebody to let you connect into those transmission lines. That costs money. That costs a lot of money for that application process. A lot of engineering drawings have to be done. PNM, Tri-State, it's just, it's, I couldn't imagine having to pay for all of that for a project that isn't going to stay. And that's the best we can do at this particular time until, you know, we, you know, they get their permanent agreement with PNM or whoever that might be through transmission at that particular time. Then of course Kathy doing the economic analysis impact report, the incentive analysis impact report, you know, brings a lot of, just like with Eberjol when we did them. You just had, we just have to go and make sure that they're legitimate company and that they're, we have another one out there that in our research, I will tell you, in our research, they were up for bankruptcy last year. So big flags with a, you know, and it, you know, tell me how this works. It's not this company. But, but those are the kind of things, we're limited as how we can do it. We just have to make sure it's a viable company and their mother company is viable in the research that AVITA's done. I'm sorry, that's kind of boring.
No, I think that's great because my fellow commissioners always kind of tell me, because I go through all this law school and get so educated and want the public to be educated. And then Lonnie will always say, well, the cart before the horse, how do you say it? And so, you know, they just have to get the approval before anything can happen. And that's all we're talking about today is will you even consider it? But I think it's important that anytime you have members of the public, that you kind of find out everything you can. Because even though it's just an approval to see if they can go forward, you always want to know what comes after that. And so kind of it's a good education opportunity to refresh us and also for the people that are impacted by it. So I think it's, it's always good to kind of have more of an in-depth conversation, even though it really just is, are you going to give us permission to try this in your county? So I do appreciate that.
When they come to the AVITA office, obviously we get the state involved. The investors on our board are thinking, are aware of who those people are. They're vetted through a lot of different investors on our board, you know, officials. But our, in working in partnership with counties, win-win, the landowner has to be a benefactor and the county has to be a benefactor. It's not any different than an industrial revenue bond. It cannot cost the county or the landowner to do a project. And that's where, that's where we start. You know, where's the win-win with the landowner and the developer? And, and to make sure that our landowners are protected, you know. It's, it's real easy to go out there and sign every contract that comes by, you know, I'm a, I'm a rancher and this guy wants to put whatever on my property. But do we really know he's going to do it? And that, we try our best to make sure that that person's going to carry out the development of the project. It's not always successful because sometimes money doesn't happen. But at, at least the landowner didn't get burned in the process.
Absolutely. And I think we have such vast acres of land in our county that I know a lot of, especially in these economic times, a lot of people are, are wondering, you know, will somebody contact us? Will we be the next solar? Will we be the next wind? How can I take care of my family and the next generation to come? And we just want to make sure that our landowners are protected because sometimes you don't know what they're offering. And we want to educate. And I'm glad that AVITA is available to the people that might have those questions or even call the county or something. Because it's always good to know that you're not being taken advantage of. And that even though we are a small rural county, that we have people in place that can take care of our residents and help us to know how to use our assets to the best possible way that we can.
So you're prepared for the other 2,800 megawatts that we're talking about right now?
So Kathy, what is your, your take? And if you have any comment before we go forward?
And as the, as the, again, we're, we're very early. This is, this is a welcoming to the county of this company. And Chris stated, you know, they're gonna, they're going to look at state, federal, and local incentives. And there are quite a few of them out there. I'm working with Myra right now and we're looking through financing for a biofuels company. As the company proceeds through its processes and it starts looking at incentives and financing assistance, public assistance, they will have to submit a complete business plan with financial statements. And we have the staff on board who can do the due diligence on those business plans. We have a contract we've done in Brad Street. And it's kind of a superficial look at a company, but we can use that to match what we're receiving from them through their business plan. The other thing that we're doing is there's been a lot of discussion about the state economic development department taking a more role in very stringent, stringent due diligence because we, we recruit companies to the state through the partnership. And so there's a system in place and we're talking about tightening that system up and making it available to, to our local communities. The other thing is that as they proceed and approach federal agencies, USDA, rural development for loan guarantee programs. And we have a training, we have training funds that we can help them train, train these employees. Again, that's the, that's the time where we look at business plans, we look at financial statements, and we decide whether or not this company is, in the case of paying money back, we have to make sure that they're a viable, strong company that's going to repay money. In the case of our training funds, those are grants. We want to make sure that those, this company will be along, around long enough to actually hire, train, and employ people. So that the state funding is not wasted on this company when it could be used on another. So if the stringent look at them from a financial perspective takes place once they start moving the project forward and look for assistance from public bodies.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Is there anyone from the audience that have a question for Kathy or Myra? Okay, thank you. So Dennis, at this point, then we would invite any of those in opposition to speak? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience in opposition to this project that would like to speak? Okay, seeing that, I do have a list of the neighboring people to this property. Is there, I'm just going to go quickly through the list and then if you're in the audience, if you would just state if you're in favor or not. Robert Lee and Sharon Marie Adams? Okay, and sir, if you, do you want to come to the mic?
Yes.
Would you be willing to come to the mic, sir, and state if you are in favor or in opposition to this project?
No, but I can, it's okay.
It's okay?
Yeah, if he wants to just state from there.
Looks like he's coming.
Okay.
Thank you. Now, this person does not have to be sworn in, is that correct?
No, the person should be sworn in.
Okay, thank you for coming up. Can you please state your name?
Robert Lee Adams.
Okay, can you use your right hand, please? Do you swear that the testimony you're giving today is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes. I'm Robert Adams. I'm the neighbor across the road. And I'm not in opposition to the project. I'm for solar. If anything the county was going to look at is, I would look at is on the sale of the property. If the property is sold, where do the water rights go? That's my only question.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Adams. And we will make that a point of record. We appreciate you coming today. Next, I see Gino Gianni, Giannini. I'm not sure if I'm saying that correct. Anybody here to represent them? Okay. There was no one here. How about the Donnie E. Gibson trustee? Okay, Van Horn Creek Land and Cattle? Deverell Walters and Sarah Lombardi? Would you like to come up and speak, sir? Thank you. Can you please state your name for the record?
My name is Dever Walters.
Okay. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes. Anyway, I really don't have any opposition towards this deal. The only real concern that I do have, I think it's already been brought up, and the fact that maybe so, you know, there is going to be some job generation. I think that's a real important factor. And the county needs something that's going to bring jobs to us. And that you hired from within, I think that's real important. I mean, that's just a concern that we have. And anything like that, I think it's a good deal. And it's a good environmental thing as far as the western part of the country. And we all got to kind of be a little concerned there. That's basically how I feel about it, you know, and I think we share the same concerns.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walters. We appreciate you being here. Ms. Lombardi, did you want to state for the record as well?
Nope, he speaks for me.
Okay, you're great. All right. Also, number six, Will, William and Joy Ry. Hi, would you like to speak on the record, Ms. Ry?
Well, we're for the project, this.
Okay, if you could just be sworn in so that we can just get it on record, we appreciate that. Thank you, Joy. Can you state your name for the record, please?
Joy.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. We are the owners and we are for the project. We've been considering it for months.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ry. We appreciate that. Steve, has there been any letters sent in in opposition on the other landowners involved?
No, there hasn't.
I mean adjacent. I mean adjacent landowners? Okay, thank you. All right, so it looks like everyone that wanted the opportunity to speak has been given the opportunity. Is there anything else that you'd like to add, Chris? Okay, well, thank you very much. That will conclude our public hearing today. Dennis, on this, as it is written, this does not require action today, or is it solely up to us?
That's up to the commission. You can take time to deliberate. You can deliberate in closed session if you wish. And it does not matter what the decision, the commission members will prepare, find, and defend, and protect as law.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. Well, then, at this time, in order not to prolong the project, I'd like to go into executive session and see if we're prepared with a decision today, or if the commission would like to deliberate. So I will now ask for a motion to enter into executive session.
So may I?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. This does require a district roll call vote, District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three? Yes, we are now in executive session, and we'll be out in about five minutes. Yes, sir.
I think I will do, because I will hang out. And if you have any questions while you're in executive court session, please call me back. And then when the meeting resumes, it's a good presentation to get that out of the line, I appreciate it.
Absolutely, we're going to step into the side office, so that's fine. Thank you. To go ahead and come back into regular session, can I have a motion for that, please? Is there a second?
A second to motion.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded. In executive, in executive session, we discussed whether or not we're prepared for a decision today. So all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes, we are now back in regular session. So now, at this time, I will call it either for an approval of the request from Sabola Green Works or a motion to disapprove. Is there a motion on the table?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the special use district to develop a solar power electricity generating facility locating within the land specifications that are on the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any contingencies on your approval?
No.
Okay, there is a motion on the table, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? I'd like to note that if this does pass at the time of the vote, that it was in the record that we would like the grading information provided to our planning and zoning office. So at this time, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Let the record reflect that there are none in opposition. Also, would like to state to council that we would like a finding of facts and confusion of law to be prepared for the record as well. Okay, thank you. We will now, we'd like to thank everyone for taking time out of their day to attend the public hearing, and we will now move on to the other business.